Calling the special board of trustees meeting to order, we could all stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. If we do a roll call very slowly, we'll probably get. We'll get Jasper if he runs or walks.
I know, I was gonna, I was gonna do it. Zagami?
Here.
Cronin?
Here.
Hermeling?
Here.
Vincentalt?
Razan.
Wyland? Here.
Is it cool? He'll be here in a couple of minutes, so.
Oh, he texts you?
So he just drove in, he just drove in.
So I'll just put when he arrives, and that's fine.
Public comments. You, you, you out there in the hall, in the audience, you want something to say? You, no, I'm wearing my glasses, I can't, who are you? So no, no public comment, anything, Nate, you got anything?
Just letting you know that Mike Leisner with WSAU is on and WAOW is also on.
Okay.
Michael Owohelski.
Okay, and Mike sent, oh, Michael, yeah, he's at some conference?
He's at a conference.
Okay. Resolutions, number four, resolution number two zero two three dash zero two zero. Relocation order and determination of necessity for Weston Avenue Road project, Alderson Street to Bird Street.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero two zero to initiate real estate acquisition process for the Weston Avenue. To Bird Street Railway Project.
Motion by Hermeling, second by Zagami, any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so Carrie, let the record show that Hardinger has entered the building.
With snacks.
With snacks, as it should be. A new business, number five, discussion and or action on the playground proposals.
Let's be, so Monday night, we. We're doing that. For three hours, yes. We've had some long meetings the last two months. So we're discussing, you know, what was brought up earlier this year as far as, you know, possibly put some ARPA funding towards. In our playground areas. So we got three different proposals, one from Burke, which is through Lee Recreation, Game Time, which is through Gerber. Sort of Wisconsin Playground Landscape Structures, which is for leisure. So what came out of the park committee was a recommendation to move forward with the playground proposals from Burke. Based on my spreadsheet. Unfortunately, my spreadsheet was inaccurate, which I stated in my RFC. So actually, based on comparables, the lowest proposal was from Game Time, not from Burke. So if you would look at the third page, the.
Are you letting us know this right now?
I let you know in the packet, when the packet was sent out. So I'm not letting you know right now.
Yeah.
It was in the packet.
In the amendment, right?
No, there was no amendment packet this time, it was just the original packet that was sent out. So.
So Burke is the one that we, we're work, we're working with kind of now and Wassa is too.
Wassa actually works with landscape structures, Burke, Game Time, Little Tikes, they literally utilize typically who comes in with the lowest proposal. Sometimes.
Each point, okay.
Yeah, it depends on what you're looking to get, so there's certain companies that don't provide certain things, so. Like I said, so I did update the packet compared to what was in the packet on Monday night, spreadsheet's been updated. I also noted on the RFC that the spreadsheet wasn't inaccurate, so currently the lowest price comparable. Is Game Time at six oh three oh sixty-nine seventy-four, and Burke is at six thirteen oh eight zero point three nine. So there is somewhat of a time factor involved in doing this, just because. Burke stated if we want anything done next year, we would need to have something signed by Thanksgiving week. Game Time is proposing a price increase the third week of November. I mean, based on steel prices, etc., so it's literally, Game Time is the largest playground manufacturer in the United States. They're a play, they're a play corp, they're a play corp company, I'm not even sure where they're based out of. Landscape Structures is based out of Minnesota, Burke is based out of Fond du Lac, so we have two somewhat local manufacturers. But also the production type. So Burke was originally thirty, thirty-two weeks old, that's something that's custom. So that's one of the reasons why you have to have something in place by Thanksgiving to try to get something done next year. Game Time is like ten, twelve weeks, so being a larger manufacturer. They have more items at their disposal as far as, you know, building the structures, etc. We actually haven't decided on the exact structures, it's just trying to get the process moving forward. And then the park committee did have some recommendations as far as changes, because we haven't picked colors exactly, colors don't change the price. If we change some features, there may be some price differences, but if we want to move the project forward, you know, if we approve something. You know, it would be like a not to exceed dollar amount, it was to move forward, and obviously we would exceed that dollar amount, but. You know, like, we talked, they also recommended adding a seventh structure. Of some sort, we looked at like the obstacle course, there's a timed one down at Riverlife, which was. Discussed, there's only one manufacturer that has that, because I looked at it this week, after our meeting, and it is Game Time. They have the, you know, like a timed obstacle course, which they have down in Wassa. As a secondary structure at Yellow Banks, the park is so large. There's two rentable structures, but one has the playground and shelter, the other one has just shelter, with nothing else there. So the possibility of adding another structure there. We'll talk about Praska. Because that would be future development, but they figured that would just be part of the development of that park versus adding a structure at this point, because nothing's been developed.
And tonight, we're only talking about these structures.
Correct.
We're not talking about.
Just playgrounds.
The camping feature.
No, not, not that, that all.
I definitely want to talk about it, because I was very excited when I heard.
That'll all come to the November twentieth.
So with the play structures that we're going to talk about and hopefully decide on, is there any thought that Kennedy, and I'm not up to speed with a lot of them here, Ty. Is that, you know, Kennedy is going to get repurposed, I would think, from this, and so, and we can still do the play structures as is, even with the repurposing.
Right, based on them.
Moving diamonds and moving this around, obviously not.
Based on the master plan concept, you know what I'm saying, it's a plan concept, it's done, so a building. It was upgrading the existing play structures and shelter where it currently is, and the restroom, so there is discussion.
But if we have to move it, it's still okay.
It wouldn't need to be moved.
What, okay.
No, no, based on both concepts, it wouldn't need to be moved, but there is a concept, both concepts show an initial structure on the west side of Park. Because there is so much activity over there with the aquatic center, you know, you have a nearly forty-eight parks, thirty-eight point three. And then you have all the baseball fields and everything, and you know how it is, you go to a baseball game, you have little kids, and they sit on the bleachers, that doesn't last very long, if you had a play structure like a hundred feet away. Hey, you have something to keep them entertained too, so. The discussion also went towards like.
What's the two numbers again, with the, the game time change number?
So game time would be six oh three.
Six oh three.
Six oh one, zero eight zero six.
Okay.
And Burke is six thirteen, zero eight zero point three nine, and that would be play structures delivered, installed, and the concrete border.
Both.
And the engineered wood fiber.
Installed.
Delivered, not installed.
Both companies.
Both companies. So if you look at, if you look at the spreadsheet.
Sort of this different, Burke, it just says.
No, Burke is delivered only. And then if you see Game Time, which would be the third line now, EWF delivered only, that's play structures and the EWF delivered only, with concrete. Order, Burke is just with concrete and the EWF delivered, fourth line now would be minus the concrete border. But it would include, so the six eighty-four number included them. Doing their border, their EWF and installation of the EWF, which would be a blown installation.
Being this close, I mean, ten thousand dollars or a little bit less.
Yeah, six oh one versus six thirteen. Which company do I like?
Like, which company does the committee like, but, who's easier to deal with, who's kept their promises better?
Oh, so we haven't done a structure since two thousand seven.
Were you here?
I was here, yes, and that was through Lee Recreation, which used to represent Play World. So our structure at Mac Miller is a Play World one.
Okay.
All the other structures the village has are Burke. And I'm pretty sure that has something to do with previous director, had a good relationship with Burke, and the Burke president came up to see me several years ago.
Is Fond du Lac?
Yep.
And Play World, Game Time is.
I'm not even sure where Game Time is based out of, like I said, it's. Alabama. Yeah.
They were established in Michigan, though.
Okay, so yeah, like I said, they're a subsidiary of Play Corp, which Play Corp is like the largest, they have multiple different playground manufacturers underneath them. So.
I, I can't help how my mind works, Game Time brought their price down without seeing anybody else's prices.
They didn't bring their price down, but they, the thing is, they didn't quote with just the engineered wood fiber, delivered, not installed.
Oh.
They had a lump sum with the EWF delivered, installed, and their border installed.
So that's seven thousand dollars, is bringing it apples to apples to Burke.
Yeah, so once they put just the delivered price, they were lower.
I got it. I'm probably done with my questions. So does the proposal from Burke include, I, because I, I thought I saw something in here about Mac Miller Park.
So I thought they, so they threw the, an extra structure out there, because they did go visit all of our parks. We originally decided Mac Miller really wasn't a candidate, it's the newest structure, it's been there almost since two thousand seven. Everything else, the newest one we have is two thousand and three. So, and it's in great condition, we don't have any issues with it, there's nothing needs replacing, it looks relatively new yet, everything functions. Where other structures are deteriorating pretty quickly.
So there.
Right now, we talked about it on Monday, if we had a top three, you know, it'd be Yellow Banks, Kelly Land, and Sand Hill, like, like literally, there's rusty stuff on it. There's holes in the platforms, so those would be like our top three if you chose to do not all of.
So what did Burke do? So, so Burke's proposal doesn't include Mac Miller?
And, no, and either does Game Time. Game Time.
Okay.
So landscape, like I said, they had thrown, thrown in the extra one, just, there was a little miscommunication session, you know.
But if we, but for landscape, if you took out Mac Miller, what would their number, what would their number be, because I assume the seven ninety-two includes Mac Miller then, correct?
Uh, yes.
But so if we took Mac Miller out.
They would, they would still be higher than.
Well, it would be, but it would probably bring it, drop it down by.
It would drop, it would drop, it would drop down, but the recommendation also was to add a structure, second structure at buildings, okay, so.
So he's taking installation out of it, who's going to install it?
No, it's just the engineered wood fiber, not the structure. It's just vault.
Yeah, just a vault.
So I mean, staff is fully capable of installing mulch, there's also a company in town, in town that has a vault floor. That does contract out, so we could look at them doing the install, which is, and I've seen them use it here in town, literally, they load the hopper and. They pull out the hundred and fifty foot hose and they just start blowing mulch versus shovels and wheelbarrows or skis steer and shovels, so. It is a viable option, we, we didn't have that option a couple of years ago. This company that blew vaults was small. You know, and then by the time you paid to get them up here, you blew your, you know, the savior savings out of the water just by getting them up here and contracted, you know, so. Like I said, so, I mean, we're looking at, pretty much, if you would try to approve it, if you want to do all of them. As, you know, as quickly as possible, we know we have ARPA funds, we know they have to be, they have to have signed contracts by the end of next year, two thousand four, twenty-four. And all funds need to be expended by twenty twenty-six.
And the two things with the, in three weeks, Game Time is having a price increase?
Yeah.
And Burke, what?
And Burke would not be able to do anything next year, just because their production times are so far out.
Oh, I see.
This point, so.
So Game Time could go next year, and we would get in before the price increase, but Burke would have to install in twenty-five.
Yes, unless we, unless we did something within the next two weeks.
But we could, what?
Unless we did something by Thanksgiving, they said if we had something signed by the week of Thanksgiving, they could do something next year.
Well.
So it's basically both same.
If we're going to make the decision tonight, and sign.
Right, and we also, and we also, I also posed a question to him, which I responded to you and Jim about. There may be some cost savings through Game Time, just due to doing all the structures at one time?
You would think any of the manufacturers, if you're bidding seven different projects versus, I'm going to do all.
Just your overhead costs in general.
Mobilization to get your crews up here.
Mobilization, trucking. You know, having a crew here for three or four weeks straight versus them traveling back and forth, or whatever.
So yes, they're, they're bidding this one, one playground at a time.
Yes.
This is all seven different bids for seven. We've got to tell them that we do this all at one time, and now.
But we didn't know that.
Oh, okay.
When we put the polls up, we didn't know if we were going to do like three next year.
I see. Any favor of doing all of the sides? Done. Right now, done. Okay, so we're here tonight, it's, it's on here as, it's discussion and or action. What, what is the recommendation from you, and what's the recommendation from the committee?
So the recommendation from the park committee was to add a seventh structure.
Was what?
To add, so you had six playgrounds, to add a seventh, so another one at Yellow Banks, and it was to use Burke. But like I said, based on my spreadsheet, Burke was the lowest, currently, after my, me fixing it and stating it in the RFC. Because I want to make sure everybody knew that I screwed up with my spreadsheet. Was, my recommendation now would be to go with the lowest proposal, which would be Game Time, and I would, I would state a not to exceed around seven fifty or eight hundred thousand.
Why?
Just because we only have six structures. Posted right now, and costed out, so if you add a seventh structure, you're probably talking another hundred thousand, so you're at seven oh one. But it wouldn't have to be that high.
Or do the whole thing at one time.
At one time.
And one set of crews up here the whole time, that's a hundred grand.
Yeah, and that's why I say, each structure, you know, the averages.
I need savings.
Oh, and savings, yes, like I said, you can put whatever number you want on it, and we may get a lower number just based on my email with them today. And correspondence with them today.
So, so Burke, if we don't, if it's not signed by the third week of November, they can't do it next year.
They'd more likely.
How much work do you have left to do at committee level with getting details hammered out, do you guys have enough time if we go with Burke?
Well, either way, either way, we have to be before the third week, even with Game Time, otherwise there's a price increase. So either company you go with of the two lowest, we pretty much have to have special, special meeting next week, following week, to narrow down details of colors. You know, features on it, etc., so we can get those details narrowed down.
Is this, would this be the craziest motion? That we would approve either one, being the lowest, not to exceed seven hundred and seventy-five thousand. With, with the thought that you're going to ask them all at one time, so it, they both could be going down, but then we would take the lowest one.
Make the decision, what's that, let the committee make the decision.
It wouldn't have to, they would come in at, with whatever quota. Yeah. If we, if we just say the lowest one. With, with, with the whole year being done at one time, and then that way we were safe and we can be done and we, we got, we'll have a sign.
Yeah, I think.
Done in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, twenty-four.
And I think they both have capabilities, because when I talked to Burke, they did ten structures in one community this year.
Would that be unheard of, have you ever heard of something that crazy? But to approve the lowest.
It is Baric, so.
You can make the motion to approve the lowest bidder.
Once, once the final numbers come in, but we're, we're going to approve Burke and Game Time together. But now whichever one comes in lower after you're telling them.
Seventh.
Seventh edition plus all seven done at the same time, all next year. If one bows out that they can't get the next year done, then it's just.
Want to put a limit on it?
You don't want to give landscape structures, if they can come in less than those other two? Oh, that's the third, I mean, there's three, three contractors.
Yeah, but they're at seven ninety-two.
Yeah, with seven separate projects.
Oh, they have seven already?
Did you mention that Game Time was the only one that had the obstacle course, the timed obstacle course that we were talking about for the.
I did, I did, I did, they're the only ones that have the time obstacle course, that was mentioned.
If you're looking for an approval from the board, throw in that third one, and it's still, it's still with all the same, you know.
Right.
You know, criteria.
Right, but that would, but it would allow us to move forward.
Yep.
As long as you set a limit on it, and that's up to you.
I got one more, are we tearing these out, the existing structures?
We are tearing out the current ones and dispose, you know, we are doing all the excavation work, and then we would be doing, that concrete border will be attracted either outside. Or if we would have time, we could do some of it on our own, we have the capabilities supporting the concrete border. It's just doing seven of them. Three, four, no feet each, so I did get the price, the price for the concrete border was provided by me. It was provided by a recent quote from Art Sultan, which is doing the master plans and, and the corp. So they, in their proposal, or their, you know, their bid that they recently did was fifty dollars a foot. Price actually came in at thirty-one dollars a foot, but right now they're projecting concrete just went up to one eighty-six a yard. Started out the summer at one forty-five, and we're at one eighty-six as of three weeks ago for.
Are we, are we satisfied that we can get this and then, and then have them decide? Yeah, I, I am too.
Okay, so I move to award the contract to any one of the three companies. For a dollar amount not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars, and the work being done in twenty twenty-four, and whoever comes in at the lowest bid.
With you tying up a mold on at the same time, and seven structures, you, you okay with that, yeah, as a committee?
Yes, I have my I am one structure, and I guess that's only available.
Yeah, I did, I have it on. I have it on a recording too, but I kind of wrote the motion.
Then you got to pound really hard on Game Time, because she likes that structure, and where's that structure going to go?
Yellow Banks.
Oh, Yellow Banks, okay.
The second structure at Yellow Banks.
Okay, are we, are we clear, are we good?
Yep.
Jim? Yep, oh, you second, okay. Motion, so a motion by Cronin, second by Hardinger, any more in the discussion? Hearing, yes?
Yeah.
Go ahead, so you had the motion, you're good, Pam?
I do, I, I wrote it down, but I probably missed a couple of words, but I have it on the recording.
Good. I just want to make sure that we're clear, I don't want anything to get held up.
Right.
The motion wasn't clear.
This is now at the discretion of the committee.
Yeah, this is. Lowest bid, twenty twenty-four, all seven structures not to exceed eight hundred thousand, done.
And where's the funding from? That should be in the motion.
And ARPA is one point four still?
She just said that.
She just sent it out today, we just talked about it right before the meeting.
I don't think we spent anything.
It's actually one point six eight four.
Oh, I like that, I like it. That's good.
The actual expenditures is, I think, the remaining amount was one point six eight four, there's projected uses still, so he had like seven different spreadsheets.
You know, we've been talking about it for six months, I, I'm, I have a lot of respect for you that you don't have a one point six million dollar spend. So I, I do, because you're conservative, that's good, I like it.
So I was, I asked if I could spend the whole thing, and I said I could, but.
I don't think you could, I don't think you would do that.
Not on this project, though. But there's other projects that we have, Jimmy's looking at me, she's like, we have our eyes on a couple of other projects.
Park related, we can second feel it. All right, so no more discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, is the warranty the same on everybody's stuff?
Yes.
Enough. And you won't have any of these wild, crazy colors that fade and look terrible in two years like the Riverlife thing?
So we already talked about this, so there's certain colors that fade faster.
Like the pool, like pool slides.
Well, and pool slides are completely different.
I don't want to get off, let's, let's stay as.
I know, but yes, we talked about, so your darker, brighter colors, the brighter colors fade faster.
Enough, so good.
So.
Another question?
Questions.
Harry, no more on the discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so Carrie. Woo, all right, ready? Move to closed session, thank you.
Move to closed session.
What do you do?
Get an agenda.
Oh, yeah. We're, we're, he's got two here. Uh, move into closed session for Wisconsin Stat nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent D deliberating or negotiating. The purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session to withhold, purchase and development agreement for redevelopment of the property located at fifty-five hundred Schofield Avenue. Um. By Hermeling, second by. Yeah, one second, though. If you're going to have, I think, you know, Mr. Gernt is here, if you wanted him to present something to the board, you should do that open session before you go into closed session. Because in closed session, it should just be counsel and the board, and whoever else is going to be looking at the bargaining nature of the, of the deal. You know, not the other side. Okay, so that should be an open session. So just so you know, that would, that would be Chris, Chris, Christine would be in closed session.
No.
Yes.
It's confidential of interest.
She, she represents, she represents the village.
You're representing Gary.
She represents the village.
Well, what's the contract said? I read it in the contract, said you're representing here.
Nope. This whole, this whole, this whole time, she's been representing the village, and it's been a, a lot of misunderstanding, a lot of talk back and forth. But she's been in every closed session we've had.
That's correct.
Yep. So I'll just make that point.
Okay, that's just, oh.
Well, no, you, you said we're moving into closed session, we're still in that spot, he's, he's just recommending. I'm just telling you that if you want to hear from Gary, since he's here, so if you do that. If Gary wants to talk, you need to talk in open session.
Right, before we make a.
Yeah, but now what if Gary's going to talk about details?
I think you just have to be cognizant of what you're saying, because we do have media online.
So Gary can't talk in closed session and then asked to be, and asked to leave? We've had that happen. We've had that happen with, well, now I can say it, Amazon. So Amazon was in closed session, and then he did his presentation and then left.
Well, and that's one thing I was thinking of too, because it's not, it's not an agenda item that he's going to speak, so it hasn't been.
This is our good point, that's not a good point.
He's going to speak.
It's not on the agenda.
We didn't have him speak in closed session, I could make note in the minutes that he was in closed session for the first, and so.
You know, for the, for the deliberating part, then we can ask.
If I can, I can state what time he's leaving closed session, and that the deliberation, the deliberating part would be after he left.
I just, as, I have to say something, and I know this is way out of character for me, but if, if our entrance sign right there says cars only, and the truck interest is down there. Why are the trucks coming in here? So somebody should look at that, if Michael's on, he should look at that, so I see the trucks coming in here all the time, and it's fresh in my mind, I'm sorry, I have no attention span. All right, so now getting back to this.
I know why you pulled in that entrance, by the way.
Huh?
I know why you pulled in that entrance.
I want to hear it.
Northgate's closed right now, Southgate's.
So we got to take that side. Okay, all right, um, where, where are we all thinking together?
Um, I guess that's, uh, doing. Everything in close.
Okay, but in the deliberation side, we can ask him to leave, he can step out, yeah, okay. All right, so staying, staying with the, uh, Hermeling, you made the motion, and second by Zagami, right?
Yes.
Yep, and to approve, a roll call vote, right, to go in? Yep.
Maloney?
Yes.
Zagami?
Yes.
Cronin?
Yes.
Hermeling?
Yes.
Hardinger?
Yes.
Vincentalt?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
We're in closed session.
I'll close in.
And who's on media? You're popping them off? Thank you.
Just the interior.
What is said during closed session, you know, this is supposed to be, you know, a bargaining, competitive, you know, negotiating strategy. Attorney-client privilege type of a meeting, so nobody outside of the group that was here should be, you know. This, these items should not be discussed with anyone else, they, if they're to be discussed with anyone else, it should be an open session, so. I think that, you know, that's important, so I think we got to be careful about putting Kristen in a position where she is. Serving two masters, okay, because you can't do that, and so I think that, you know, as far as our communication with. Gary, that, that should come in a formal way somehow, in a letter or some way like that. So noted. Possible action, there is no action. Back.
It's going to come back next week.
Yep, next meeting, remarks from trustees, Mr. Vincental. Uh, Wyland.
I have expected something new.
Is that your comments?
I already had my comment.
So nothing from Corin? Yep.
No, just a reading, Steve.
That what?
I'll talk.
Oh, that's, yeah, okay. Uh, nothing from me, thank you both. Uh, nothing from me, thank you both.
Thank you.
And future items, November twentieth at six PM, and, uh, that's it. A motion to adjourn, so by Hushang, second by Steve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so Carrie adjourned at seven nineteen.